Five o'clock, we'll call the meeting, go on. Welcome everybody to our August board meeting. If you'll take a look at the agenda, the next item we have, people are doing the last agenda. I'll entertain a motion whenever you're ready. Let me know if you have any additions or changes or anything. So move to approve the agenda. Have a say, all of us in favor? Alrighty, next we'll have the pledge of allegiance, y'all, police team. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next we have the board minutes from our July 12th meeting. Hopefully you had a chance to look at those, not take a look at those. Let us know if there's any additions or police changes. We'll entertain a motion when you're ready. Have a motion to three minutes. Have a say, all of us in favor? Our motion, alright. The next item is July disbursements that you received earlier.
What's public ending department?
That's our workman's comp.
And the city of Fayetteville?
That's the fourth quarter that is on our own, the office. And then the next public ending date is the general ability for your reservations.
Can motion approve the disbursements for July? Have a say, all of us in favor? Alrighty, we'll move on, moving on to principal's report, Ms. Whitehead.
Hey, hey, hi. Today was awesome.
You sleep good tonight, wasn't you?
Yes, I'm gonna sleep very well. We had phase in, so pre-K came until 11:00. The boys in kindergarten came till 12:00. Pre-K and kindergarten did not eat lunch, and first and second came today. And out of the 202 students enrolled, 29 of them were absent, and we had 19 to enroll today. So, and the kindergarten numbers are going up. Tomorrow will be third and fourth grade, pre-K, and kindergarten girls. And those girls, they're a multitude, they're a plethora of girls. So it's gonna be some cattiness on kindergarten. But that's it, it was a wonderful, wonderful day. Yes.
For 19 enrolled.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Lot of excitement this morning at the school, at all preschools. But you know, it's always a lot, as y'all know, it's a lot of fun, Ralph Askins.
The babies, yeah.
Those decorations you put out on the bank and whatnot, I heard there were more inside, and I didn't see those, but very, very well done.
Thank you, thank you.
That's a lot of extra effort, and we really appreciate that.
Well, I wanted to show, one of the concerns from the teachers was that I would, being from, not being from Alabama, but living in Alabama, to use Ralph Askins as my springboard to be a principal in Alabama. And I purposely didn't ask any of them to help me to redo the school. I wanted to show them that I was vested, and I'm here to stay, so.
Well, it was, it was a marvelous display.
Thank you.
I can only imagine if I had a child and I was driving up, just such colorful, exciting.
I fell about three times, it doesn't work in heels.
Tell them about the things where they can take pictures, the poster.
The backdrops?
Yeah, tell them about the backdrops, because that was something I found this morning, and I thought was very interesting, and I think they'd like to hear that.
Every grade had a backdrop. So Ms. Amber Metford actually spearheaded that, and there was a little stool there and a little backdrop, so every student could take, could take a picture in front of their grade. So, we're just doing some great things. Yeah, they were excited, they were excited, we were excited too.
Thank you so much.
Y'all have a good one.
Alright, Ms. Jean. How are you doing?
Great, how are y'all?
Good.
We had a great day as well. We had fifth and sixth grade in the building today. We had 73 fifth graders, 83 sixth grade. Bus drop-off and dismissal was, was very smooth. Tomorrow, we will have our seventh and eighth graders come in, and then of course, all students on Wednesday. I just want to say a big thanks for allowing us to do these phase-in days, because the smooth transitions of buses, and loading buses, and getting kids in the lunchroom, and through the lunch line, all that would, it would be so much harder if we had 200 kids in the cafeteria at one time, whereas opposed to 100, you know, the 83 or something, that we can, you know, really talk them through the procedures, we can take our time, and we're just not throwing them in there. So it just makes setting procedures so much better for the building, so. Sets us up for success.
I wanted them to hear that too. It, that is a game changer that I wouldn't, I think we should always do it, wherever I would go, I would suggest that, that is how good that was.
Well, I mean, we, we made sure every student had a bus note, whether they said they knew where they were going or not. We could, we would've had a really hard time working with lunch and everything, and getting, you know, 400 notes to students, but with the, you know, the 200 we were dealing with, every child had a note of where to go, every child was, got home, and it was very smooth. One, one little fifth grader was left in the car rider line, and I said, honey, let's go call. She called, and the mother said, well, I called, and I said, I am so sorry, maybe she didn't get the note. And I went back and looked at our Xerox, or we have the carbon copy note. She had a note, told her to get on the bus. I said, honey, where's that note that we gave you? Didn't you get a, mm-hmm, where is it? In my back pocket. I said, what does it say? And she pulled it out, ride bus 18, that's what that means. So we just laughed, we sat there and talked, and, and, so, hey, that's all we've got, that's, that's the biggest problem, we can handle it, so. Yes, you know, she, you know, they were not used to the little white notes, so I thought, well, somewhere the communication wasn't exactly, everyone else got it, but she did. But she knows now, so, and the lady that picked her up was very nice. No, we didn't lose her, we sat there and had a good conversation, we were waiting on her ride, so.
The phase-in was such a success, and everybody liked it last year so much.
And we even, our parent group, who we met with, they all liked, I mean, everybody, I mean.
Yes, it, it just.
A hundred percent, just perfect, just. But who would not want somebody that could spend a whole day working with their child, whether they'd have to, you know, divide your time? I mean, it's just, it's wonderful.
Yes, the, the fifth grade, if they were, because they'll be eating, you know, they were by themselves today in the cafeteria. So we could walk them through the line and show them, had it been, they're, they'll be eating with, I believe it's seventh grade, but you know, they stay separate, but still, that would've been very overwhelming and scary for, for them, to be all together. So it lets us focus on those kids for sure.
And who was good?
You sure did, yes. So, alright, any questions?
Enrollment wise, you said there were 73, 83 for the two grades?
Yes, 73 for fifth, 85 for sixth. We had some that were not there. We contacted everyone that we could, some of the numbers aren't working, there were about three that did not show, but were coming. A couple that had transferred, but we already knew, but most of every one of those, but one, it was like Alabama, Franklin County. Out of those grades, I only knew one that was going to a different area, and it was because of a situation, it was a death in the family, that had caused them to have to, to go to a different area. It was a, you know, as far as, you know, seventh and eighth grade, we'll see, you know, where they are tomorrow, but, yeah, a couple of kids, we, the numbers are just not working, but we will keep, we'll keep calling and trying, see if we can find them. So, okay. Alright, thank you, y'all have a good evening.
Mr. McCormick?
Greetings. Mr. McCormick has gained a little weight. But he has gotten more attractive.
We, what are you on the last?
So, there we go. So, just, I'm reporting for him, just to make you aware, they had to do a shift around, I think.
Yeah, I was gonna, Eddie's son had an accident at school, and so, I think it's gonna be okay.
Right, and he, he shifted to go with his son, of course, the doctor, that required Adam then to cover the soccer game, and then Keela's at the volleyball game, so, everybody's on a mission, so. He wanted you guys to know, of course, we're doing the phase-in, so today it was the ninth and 10th graders. He said, we had about 190 out of 213 students report to school. We had 20, 23 of them that were missing, and the four of those were confirmed sick. We also had Ms. Rulander, Ms. Killibrew coordinate with some of our senior student council members to provide a mini freshman orientation after lunch. The kids really enjoyed the activities, and did a lot of mini icebreakers, and had opportunities to ask the upperclassmen questions, if they had any. We look forward to having our juniors and seniors tomorrow, and he said he did apologize, and he explained the situation with where he was. So, I encourage you to email him lots of questions, and I'm sure he will get back to you within 24 hours.
Ms. Jones? Mr. Jones?
It's a pleasure to be able to speak with everybody again this evening. I hope you're all doing well. Before I start with the document that I passed out, I know Mr. Hopkins has sent that via email and electronic services, but I want to acknowledge hope for Mr. Bobby Eman's good health. He'd had a cardiovascular spell this weekend, had some procedures done. I spoke to him yesterday, and he seems to feel much better, and is looking forward to a healthier future. Hopefully he'll be cleared to be able to rejoin us after this week, so, wish all the best to Coach Bobby. That being said, after the priority there is taken care of, I wanted to share with all of you this document from JBHM, which has got our Safe Room Gym preliminary schedule. Some of the dates have passed, obviously we've had our kickoff meeting. We're going to look at getting our soil and survey proposals. This will be a pretty in-depth kind of a soil and core sample procedure, because we want to make sure everything's gonna be right, and we know there's some sinkholes and things of that nature out back. After that, the proposals, the finalization, for owner of you on the schematic design, we're looking a week of August 16th through 20th. Then, we're hoping to be able to do a presentation. When it says owner presentation, that specifically means a presentation that we're trying to sync up with the city of Fayetteville during their boardwork session on that Tuesday. It would be in the morning, and of course, as, as we get it all finalized, we'll share out details, but we would like to, as a city team, between the schools and the city, because it's taken both organizations and groups to make this happen, kinda unveil the plan to the people at that time. And then from there, I won't read all the dates, but skimming down to the bottom, August 1st, 2023, we're hoping to have this thing ready to, to go and play ball. Yes, very excited about that potential date, and looking forward to a good project, good long project, that I'm sure we'll have a lot of little details that'll be fun to work on, so.
Let me say, as y'all know, when you hired me, that I've been a part of a lot of building projects and those things. The team that has been selected was top-notch in that meeting.
Absolutely.
I was very impressed with the architect and the building construction, man, they really knew, we had some que, we had some questions, and, and they were right on them.
We are in the process, because this is a first in Tennessee, the team is so practiced and well-versed in this, that they are sharing some stuff with the state, and some of the FEMA people with the state that haven't worked on one of these specific projects, and we're feeling like we're building good foundations for other projects in the future across the state, so it's, it's neat. Yeah, we're really pleased with it. Everything went really well today. Pleased to have the first day behind us, and all the kids delivered, and it was very nice, but I'll be happy to try to answer any questions related to facilities or transportation, if you have any. Thank you very much. Y'all have a great one.
Ms. Johnson, you wanna come back?
Sure, I would love to.
Now you can be yourself.
It's like Groundhog Day, so you're just gonna, here we are again. I actually have nothing to report, we're basically, you know, doing the best we can with the other things, starting school. If you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those, if not.
You're still, we're on target for S3.0?
No, that we, it's, the deadline has moved back to the 27th. They have just now started reviewing those, as I explained to other people. The state just got theirs approved by the feds one week ago. So therefore, there were people who submitted them and put them in early, but what happened was, guess what? You submitted them before the state plan was approved, so now there are adjustments that are having to be made. So we're working on our COVID reentry plan. Mr. Hopkins, I'm sure, has shared with you, there has been little or no guidance from the Department of Education, or from the Health Department on that, in reviewing those individuals around us. As I stated before, we have extreme one way and the other, you know, we're gonna keep our reentry plan vague. You know, some interesting things, the mayor, Mayor Newman, has been very gracious in kinda keeping us abreast of the numbers, the local numbers and the surrounding numbers, because he has access to that. And so, we're just monitoring it, and adjusting as we need be. So it's going to be interesting to see, as we discussed today, how the State Department adjusts, if the things they have said currently, they are going to be able to adhere to and hold to.
Comparing the guidance received at this time last year, compared to the guidance received at this time, it's not apples to oranges, basically, we've received none. And what they do is say that we need to contact the Health Department, but as we do, the Health Department's not receiving a lot of guidance either. So we, we anticipate lots of changes on the fly, and so we're, as she said, we're creating it to be very vague, the fact that we can adapt and move with it. But I, I think while you're here, if anyone, I must say this, and I know Ms. Murdock's had some questions, and I try, we do not have an option at this time for any virtual school. They have quit that option out for anybody, you had to have it start, and you had to have a minimum of 100 students enrolled, and you had, had to have a school off itself, like Lincoln County does, they, they had one for three years. So they can still continue theirs, but we don't, we, we don't have the option to create that. So if for some unforeseen reason, we have to shut down for days, at this point in time, we'll have to use stockpile days. And as far as the virtual, we can't, no one can be home on virtual for longer than, 10 days.
Yes, we're, we're gonna do, and you'll be seeing a policy coming up next month, that we discussed, and the state law has allowed that there is some flexibility on virtual programs or courses, but as far as going home, unless you're on homebound, and you have COVID and you're taught virtually, there is no, hey, you know, we're down for two weeks or whatever, so, stay tuned, I imagine.
And I will say, based on we received another one at that, to the homeless today, I'll just say that. Not many people are making a decision on whether anybody goes home. Matter of fact, if there's a positive, you're to contact the Health Department, the Health Department is telling people when to go home and when to come back. It is, and the fact that, you know, they're not even notified, some are not even notified the school, so, yeah. I, I would dare say that you could go through all systems, and I don't know of any that's gonna be alike. So we're just trying to make Fayetteville cities, to be the best we can be, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, how are y'all? Good, good. I'm sure they all said this, but I think today went great. I was very, went by the school, they were really doing good. I missed the last board meeting, I had foot surgery, I had a bad toe going, so, got that straightened out, and life's, life's a lot better, so I apologize for missing last month. I don't really have a whole lot to tell, to talk to you about, but one thing I did want to mention, you know, we've started the online registration this year, and I want to give you some numbers with that, I, I didn't know how it was gonna turn out, new things like that are hard to judge and scale and zero, but we've had 516 parents go online and work on the registration, or get it completed or almost completed, and we're still lacking about 832. So, not too bad, I was, I was pretty, pretty happy with that number, so, and it'll increase as we go on, and we get more kids. Number-wise, of course, today we had the staggered start, so we're not sure exactly where we're at number-wise, but we'll know in a few days, probably, probably next week, we'll really have some, some good hard numbers to, to look at and, and talk to you about. State test scores, the state released some TCAP scores today. Just basically looking at statewide, comparing year to year, really haven't had a chance to get into there and, and dig through that, but we'll get together as a team, and we'll present some stuff to you guys, and kinda let you know what's going on, and, and you're welcome to go to the state website, it's all over Tennessee Education, and you can kinda see how the state did in comparison to previous years, so.
But we are gonna try to summarize it and make it, uh.
Yes.
Easy to read, for, say, you have to explain, you know, I mean, I, you're welcome to go on there, you need to know it now, but we will, you know.
Yeah, yeah, so, don't really have anything else, if you have any questions about anything, I'm glad to answer. Okay, thank y'all very much.
I'm good, thanks, how are you guys? I feel like I shared a ton at the last board meeting, I don't have anything specific to share tonight, unless you guys have any questions.
Where are we with the CDC?
We, they, they're saying, or it can update you maybe, but they're, they're saying the large part of that at the high school should be ready by the end of the week, and they'll still be working in the smaller part, which will be great. So I've talked to the teachers about setting up, like, maybe a partitioned area within the large room, so we can have that cooldown area while we wait for the smaller area to be finished, but it's, it's gonna be up and running hopefully by the time phase-in is done, and all the kids are here, and, so we're super excited about that. Any other questions? Thank you.
Hello, how are y'all?
Good. I do not have a lot to share today, we're still waiting on our federal funds, our carryover money to come through, before we purchase some of our materials and supplies, but I do want to say with the Blue Ribbon Schools process, we had a great time at our admin conference, we played, had a lot of team-building activities that were fun for our, for our group, so. Did you guys have any questions for me? Okay, alright, thank you guys.
Hi, how are you? Just share a little bit about pre-K, we are working with parents for early drop-off, and we also have gotten approval for them to stay in 21st Century After School program, so we're trying to make sure that as many of our babies that can come to pre-K can. We're at about 15, I have one classroom that's at 17, but the others are at 15 right now. Had two new ones today, well, I moved two to kindergarten after we looked at birth certificates, and then two new ones, so we're kinda back and forth, and I'm gonna defer the rest of my report to Mr. Whitmore.
Yeah, I talked to Ms. Young, I just wanna make a couple comments, I applaud our system nominating some of our great people, students and community peoples, our parents and people that support us for these TSBA awards that are coming up. We wish them all the best of luck, hopefully do okay, we, hopefully can, but we wish them the best of luck. And it takes with great pride that we like to, we have another nomination for a TSBA Service Award that I would like to mention at this time, and I'm reading this certificate that we're gonna present, it's Fayetteville City Schools Appreciate Your Dedication to Educational Excellence, and your distinguished service as a member of the Fayetteville City School Board, and Officer of the Tennessee School Board Association, and recognizes Mark Clark for the See How Handed Distinguished Service Award, School Board Member of the Year nominee.
You, you get to have your picture taken with us.
This is the highest honor that a school board member can receive, and we wish Mr. Clark the best of luck, but Mark, we love you, your passion for education has been second to none, and, and on behalf of the school board, good luck. Are you surprised?
Well, that was the plan. That was the plan. That was the plan, was for him to be surprised.
She did do a good job of nominations. Well, she did. But we, we think we have excellent candidates in all of ours. Thank you, Ms. Young. Thank you very much for taking this, leading this.
Well, he wanted to be a surprise, so it was.
Ms. Young, I think we accomplished that.
I think we accomplished.
Jeff wanted to make sure that it was not only the agenda, so that it's not a convenient surprise, so he did.
Seriously, thank you, so it's, and, and you know, just having that nomination, I, it's not the kind of thing you seek, so thank you so much. You know, we, this board has had a winner of that.
Just keep your head safe, go ahead, Mark.
Go ahead.
No, no, go on, Mark, go ahead.
Right, 'cause Phil Askew was a winner of that statewide award back in the day, and then Jim Bills was nominated, right, he made the Tennessee School Board, I'm gonna say, because we went to that as well.
Well, he did make, that's, that's right, he did. He'd win that award.
So, but this, just being in that conversation is awful, awfully, it's just being on the kind of.
Well, you know, we, we should best of luck. We wish all our nominees best of luck, so.
I think, I think we've got three excellent, I mean, I'm, I'm, I think that they'll, if they would just do it, but they don't have the names, we'd have a real shot at, because I mean, I don't want, I don't want everybody to say, damn, the city's walking away with all three of them.
Alright, Ms. Lisa?
Passed out the new personnel update listing.
You know, we'd given one list earlier, so we'd want to give you an updated list, that people were on that list.
These are new employees that we are in the process of enrolling into our school system, and also we are, have been making, dealing with our non-returning staff to make them inactive in all of our software, and I've been, it's channel, help and deal, and so forth. And also, we are in the process of submitting all of our federal financial expenditure reports and need plans, so that with the federal dollars, we can get our carryover money moved over to 22, so that we can revudge those dollars. And we're also in the process of placing a fiscal year, getting ready for all of the users to come. And, uh, we're also in the process of placing a fiscal year, getting ready for auditors to come on site and so.
That's true, I mean, if we start private, I don't know if they can, I just think it's gonna probably be said.
That does feel a little thing to us in, uh, confirmation letters is.
Yeah, I do that.
At the first step that we have to, but we're in the process of getting our books closed so that we can, um, be ready for the outage and also be ready for the next, that can still be.
Very good. Am I getting any questions on this list?
All righty, we'll go with, uh, start, um, reports from committees of facility transportation. Eric, you got anything else on it? Do you wanna say? You may have gone with cuts. No, I just said, do you have anything on facility transportation?
Um, no, I did hear, um, I believe Ms. Tooten was talking about the special ed rooms. Uh, the big room at the high school was completed today, and they were moving in, from what I understand, today. The smaller room will take a little more time because we gotta hook up some, uh, like an oven and things like that, but that's, that's.
And, and I do want to, you know, obviously, due to some health issues, uh, Bussing's a little shaky right now.
Oh, yeah.
Have it taken care of and.
Yeah, we've got a plan and we're working it out.
So I, I want you to, they are on, on the job, making it happen.
Doing our best. Thank y'all.
Okay, I see one finance item here, and in the past, I'm pretty sure with our director's school being the fiscal agent, we gave them the necessary approval to handle, uh, the necessary amendments and fund transfer for federal projects. So, uh, we need formally approve with Mr. Hopkins, uh, to be able to do that. So I, I don't make that motion to approve Mr. Hopkins to file necessary amendments and fund transfers for federal projects for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Can I say, in discussion, all's in favor? All opposed? All right, thank you very much. And now we move on to insurance and policy, and, uh, I guess. I guess we, what we can do though is we can approve, I mean, approve the policies with no revisions. We can approve them as a group.
Yes, there's, uh, three pages in your packet of policies that we reviewed. Um, and these are the ones that do not require revisions, we just need to approve those. So I move to approve these forty-five, um, policies for all of us that would need the whole revisions.
That's it. All's in favor? All opposed? All right, thank you.
Now, we do have three that we, um, have made some revisions on, so we need to approve those on first reading, and I'll do those separate. And there should be a copy in your, um, folder with the old policy and then the new one with revisions. So the first one is, um, four point two oh six, the homebound instruction. I move to have this approved on first reading.
And motion say? All's in favor? All right.
Okay, the second one is one point eight zero three, tobacco-free schools. That one has been made revisions as well. So I move to have this one, uh, approved on first reading.
And motion say? All's in favor? All right.
Okay, and the third one, um, one point one zero two, board members legal status. That one has a revision as well, we added some things in there, so I move to have this approved on first reading.
I have say, and I have motion say? All's in favor? All right, very good. Anything else, Ms. Bryce?
That is it, we are all called in until September.
Thank you. All righty, uh, Mr. Director.
Uh, I, I put two pins on each one of your, uh, that there. And I have more if you ever need them, but I thought y'all might wanna give them out. Obviously, it's getting near that time of year that people like to have them, so I have some more, but just let you might want some of those. Uh, other thing is, I, we rearranged some supervisor assignments today, and I'll be getting those things to you. We kinda made it approved and deleted some and, and moved some around, so I'll get that to you there. Uh, still working with COVID, you know, I try to keep y'all informed with the, uh, text messages. If that's still good, I'll continue to do that. But, uh, if you have any questions about it, I'll be glad to answer. But I think we kinda already went through some of those things. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
I just have a couple things. Uh, I know the Fall District meeting is scheduled for September second, so if you're going, like, saying you know if you're going or not, so. I think, I guess you still have time to register and whatever, saying you still, okay, you'll do that. Uh, then, uh, September board meeting is, uh, September sixth, which is Labor Day, which is no school, so I think we need to adjust. Uh, is everybody okay, I mean, it's Tuesday the seventh hour? Everybody okay, Bridget? I mean, Ms. Hopkins? Tommy? All right, yeah, Ms. Bryce. Marky here, you're good, so everybody's okay if we go to the seventh? Okay, so we'll, we'll, I'm just talking to you good with that date.
Man, that ain't good.
Okay, so we'll go with, we'll change it to Tuesday the seventh. I'm gonna go with that. Uh, the last thing I have is just a reminder, and I don't know if everybody's aware, but Highway fifty-five is having their grand opening this week, the ribbon cutting, I think, was today. They're having things going on during the week and, and, uh, uh, and I think it's Wednesday? Uh, not yet, the fourth, it's Wednesday, and, uh, five to close. They're calling to spirit night, and twenty percent of all their sales for that period of time go to, uh, Fayetteville High School and Lincoln County High School. So I wanna let everybody, if you didn't know that, I wanna let you know they're having a whole week long worth of celebration and doing things during the day, uh, or every day. So I just wanna let everybody be aware of that. Okay? So.
Yes.
Very nice. And we have a lot of, and we have several students, you know, I'm just like, we got several. We got one, a big group out there working, and they're doing great work, so they're, it's really great, so pass it on to everybody. And that's all I have.
Are y'all, what, Wednesday, you're jumping, be at schools Wednesday morning?
Well, okay, Mark, well, Mark, yeah, that text you, the text you said, we interpreted a little different, so.
I think he was talking about the introducing the Tiger football, right?
Is that?
Yeah, well, they, they, yeah, but I, I didn't. No, 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 no. They, they had created for a moment, they meet the Tigers this Thursday night. It was not planned, they had let them know, I couldn't remember about it. And then due to, look, some of our issues that were thinking, we, they, they called me, they said that they felt it would be best if they didn't have it. So that's just this big meet the Tigers, I think, Thursday, yeah, but, but now for y'all, Wednesday, I think that just like we did last year, but now, you know, wherever y'all wanna be.
Last night, I turned to the other, that's my, Mark turned to the right one, so that's all. So, yeah, usually get there at seven o'clock, so it's everybody's choice of where, I mean, if you can greet students for a little bit. Tommy, I asked him, will you leave, and he walked right down the highway.
I choose high school because I have one to drop off.
That's okay.
I'll do middle school.
I, I don't care. Where y'all need.
Tell them, can.
You going to the middle school?
You wanna do?
I haven't been to middle school.
You wanna do high school?
No, it's your program, I'm gonna see.
Why don't you go to middle school, Mark, and I'll go, I'll, I'll go to high school.
Okay.
I don't know about Jennifer, whatever, but, but you can handle it.
Well, I think she, I, I think she.
Yeah, because there's a bus door in the back.
That's right, in the back.
No, I'll probably start the day at Ralph Faskins, because I think I started the day last year at the middle, high school. But I'll, I'll fit all of, but I'd probably be there if you turned out.
I think Jennifer wanted the high school.
Jennifer go high school, all right, well, I go.
I think she wanted the high school.
Okay, well, I go to middle school, Mark. So, just do that.
Y'all too, uh, you and Jennifer at the, at the high school.
You let Jennifer not boil?
Yeah, I would.
So just out front, standing?
You say, right, yeah, as long as, I mean, you know, as long as can, I mean, get to work, get on, I mean, just, whatever feels, so it's, it's always been a great thing. We've always had compliment, ever since we've done it, we've had a lot of compliments from, you know, parents and students and everything. It's been, it's been really good, it's been great for us, really. It's been really great for us. It really is.
Heck, that's what you business, that's what you get, that's what you say.
That's right. So Wednesday morning, seven o'clock, right there. All right, that's all I have, uh, I guess we stand the journey. See you next month.